Okay. If we could start this Tuesday, January 7th Everett Planning Commission meeting with roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Sand?
Here.
Vice Chair Tisdale?
Here.
Okay, then we've got some minutes here that you've all received and any changes or anything that needs to be modified?
Move for adoption as prepared.
Okay, a second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Commissioner Dunn?
Abstain.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tisdale?
Yes.
Now's the time for members of the commission have any updates or anything since the last meeting you'd like to talk about or?
I'll do a quick one. So for Memorial Day, I just want to publicly thank some members from the Lowell Civic Association for planting flowers in front of the memorial we have for fallen soldiers in the Lowell Neighborhood Park. So thank you to the Parks Department for relenting to Gail Chisholm's phone calls and thanks to Gail, Jackie, and Phyllis Minshew for planting.
Good. Michael?
No report.
Catherine?
No report.
Small, with all this going on with this new Everett Metro, I took the opportunity of a music initiative and a car show to kind of beat the streets and talk to people about what are we missing here, what would you like to see downtown? And, you know, there's, Alex said this a few meetings ago, there's a lot more here than we realize there are here, from food to entertainment to hospitality. And I think if it was anything that I heard continuously, it was that the demographics have changed and that there's a younger population and that a younger population stays awake longer than an older population. I think that's how they politely put it. But it was, and I just, I talked to anybody and everybody that would, and I was, I was pretty proud of, you know, sometimes we look at ourselves and we don't realize all that we have and it was good. And then today Carol from the city, Carol that does the events and stuff?
Thomas?
Thomas, thank you, handed out some maps at a Rotary presentation she did that was really good to kind of complement all this and wish I would have had him for that. But people are excited, I think, about downtown Everett and it's, I guess David will show us on Thursday how it's, how it's going to work out, but that's my report.
David Stellheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and because of the big agenda tonight, we thought Alan should get a night off because he goes to many night meetings, so covering for him. Just upcoming, your next meeting on the 21st, we will have a little bit fuller agenda. We will have the public hearing on the impact fee exemptions that we workshopped three weeks ago, I believe. We're not going to do the SEPA amendments until July, so we're gonna, we're working through some, some issues on that. We're not ready for the public hearing on that, so we'll hold off. And I think we'll have two workshops perhaps on the 21st, one on affordable housing 101, and then perhaps if we can convince the city engineer to come and talk about the downtown parking study. That was done in, we haven't had that presentation from the planning commission yet. So with that, that's our report.
Okay, thank you. This is a time when if there's any citizen that's got anything that they'd like to speak about that isn't on the agenda, we have one person that signed up to speak on this subject, but this would be a subject that isn't on the agenda, now's the time. Okay, seeing none?
There's one on the paper.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you're going to speak on the topic that is here tonight, the transportation plan?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it has different topic during the public comments. I guess I just.
Okay, now, now would be that time.
Okay.
Yes, John?
Demus.
Demus, thank you.
So, John Demus, I, homeowner at 2126 Wetmore, just right down the street. So what I wanted to ask the planning commission tonight was about the topic of detached accessory dwelling units. I know that the city last discussed this, I believe around 2010. That was the last city council meeting that this topic was discussed. And are you all familiar with the, with the type of detached accessory dwelling unit? So, right now in most, in all areas of Everett, I believe, you can have an attached dwelling unit, a mother-in-law type of scenario. In my case, I've actually got a two-car garage in the back. And what I want to do is because I became caregiver to my brother who's disabled recently, and so I need to add another bedroom to the house. So for me, the logical scenario seemed to add another floor that would turn the garage into a detached accessory dwelling unit, so apart from the house and that would have sleeping quarters in. There's been a lot of talk in the region about getting these updated to code. Right now, if I, I can't do that in the way that I would like to do it. It would have to be attached to the house in order for me to do it. So, and I guess that's what I just wanted to see is I know the last time was about 2010 that I saw that this issue was raised and that it was discussed. And I don't know the changes within the five years that have happened from then to now and all the growth that we've seen, if that's a topic that would be brought up again.
David, can you help us there?
Well, it certainly is a topic that if the planning commission and mayor and council are interested in, we can look at trying to put that into the work plan. I think I corresponded by email with Mr. Demus and just kind of pulled out some information and it's all before my time here. So I think that there was an infill study that was done a couple of years ago that was presented and I'm pretty sure there's quite a few workshops that the planning commission had and I don't think that a lot of those recommendations were warmly received by some of the neighborhoods of the stories I've heard about it, but I'm not sure. So, but certainly we could bring some of that stuff back and look at it and have a conversation if the planning commission is interested.
I have a quick question. So isn't there possible relief through a variance? I mean, it sounds like this is something that you're needing right now for your, I mean, and I don't know if that could, but is there any source of relief in the code for special circumstances such as?
I would be somewhat surprised because that would be a relief from a use standard. It's not a performance standard, but I don't know, I'm just winging it right now on that, so.
From what I've read of the code, it's pretty, it's pretty well-defined on where, because I believe some areas can have detached, or is it all attached?
There's quite a bit of, there are some areas that can have detached, but it's pretty widely restricted throughout the city.
Right. I found the archives from the city council meetings from the dates that, that had some pretty good, interesting presentations, so I think a lot of the data's probably out there. It's just seeing if it's a good fit. I mean, and if we're talking, I mean, we've seen a lot of growth. I mean, we've got the WSU campus going in, properties in Everett, I mean, all of the shuttered houses that are gone now, they're all sold or they're on the market. Rents are going up, so for me, you know, yes, it would help me out, but I think this is a way that we can add density into single-family home neighborhoods, but still maintain the character and the look of what is a single-family home. And for me, living down the street, you know, usually when I take the bus, I walk to downtown Everett, it's about a quick 10-minute walk. And there's lots of people that definitely walk the neighborhoods.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the thing to do is, would be to ask staff to put together a little paper for us and provide the information to us, as to discussions that happened in the past, along with the proposal here, and then bring it back to a work session to talk about it. Sounds, as I recall, to initiate a change in the code would either require the city council or the planning commission to initiate that action, so I think it all starts with giving us more information.
Right.
We can do that, yeah.
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you done research on it as far as, you talked about density, but affordability?
I haven't done any research on that on, on my own. Actually, a lot of my information I got came from the city council meeting presentations.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
I just want to highlight, I think this is a really good subject that we should be investigating because density is going to become a big issue and we are trying to figure out how to accommodate growth in a sustainable manner. And I think that what we're also finding is that the families are changing and that different generations are starting to live together because of cost needs and things of that. So I really appreciate you coming in and bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, it's all yours, David.
Well, actually, it's, turn it over to Richard here, so.
Richard Terry, Everett Public Works, and this is my annual visit to talk about the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. It's a state requirement that is part of the comprehensive plan for the city of Everett. This actually is an appendices to the transportation element, and so the changes this year are minor in number, but major in the dollar amount that it adds to this financially unconstrained list. In the transportation element update that was before you, high-capacity transit became part of the list, and so adding the three items that are added under high-capacity transit on that cover sheet or the cover page, the list of all the projects, adds $4.3 billion to the list because it's the light rail extension from Lynnwood to Everett, all of the stations that may be put in place, and then any kind of what I have named the High Capacity Transit Support Program. That enables city staff to look for funding for the other things that need to happen around a station or around certain parts of light rail as it becomes more real in a couple of decades, depending upon how ST3 goes. And so this list, that sort of gives you a flavor or a character of the list. The way the city uses this list is that we put everything that could possibly be looked at or thought about as a project over the next rolling six years. And so along with that, under transit, there are some improvements and upgrades to software and to hardware for the software on their various vehicles, and those are the three highlighted projects, the onboard ITS, the service planning and development software, and a next-generation ORCA project. ORCA, if you're not familiar, is the fair payment program that is used regionally. The only project that came off of last year's list is the Broadway Bridge Replacement Project. It's complete, it's being used, it's complete enough to remove from the list. So this list again is a financially unconstrained list of projects. Really what the council is authorizing is for city staff, both myself and transit staff, to seek funding or to seek and do any of the projects in any of the phases, whether that's preliminary design, right-of-way acquisition, or actual construction. On the transit side, it could be acquiring vehicles, it could be implementation of some other pieces and parts of their program. It matters that the project is on the list or a program is described on the list. It's really not a priority order. The number does not signify that one project is going to be done quicker than the other or that it has a higher priority than the other. The projects, when they become real, go through the normal council process. There'll be an ordinance, there'll be decisions that are very public about how we do what we do and, and all of the different pieces as we move forward. So with that, if there are any questions about any of the projects or process, stand ready.
Michael?
I'm used to seeing TIPs that include dollar amounts and projected years for completion of projects and so on. Is that available somewhere besides just the?
It's the next, there was a handout, I believe, that had the next 50 pages or so of that document?
Yes.
So.
Sitting right in front of me, actually.
We just got it.
Okay. It did not, those did not change from last year, other than some of the dates moved because they moved to 2017 and then out years because they're just, they're still projects being thought of or have not yet started any phase.
Thank you.
So the total for local for the city is about $415 million. There's a port process on there, that's about $150 million, and then the balance is the $4.3 billion that is the high-capacity transit for the dollar amounts.
So is there, and I'm sure it's probably on the website somewhere, is there a kind of a profile description of each one of these projects so you can generally, you know, what are the needs that it, the purpose of it, what's it addressing?
We're, we are working towards that. If we get specific questions, we can answer. Some of these projects have lived on the list for a while and they've actually kept the same title and sort of changed to what the city or engineering is thinking about or designing in that. So there's not a, say, a project scope per se for each one. There's the map, if, if a map explains sort of where it's at or helpful, not every project is mapped because some of them are hard to figure out and map without causing people undue concern.
I think what can happen as a project develops and moves from this list to another
list for seeking funds, either county-wide forums or at the Petersham Regional Council, that's when the scopes get further developed and there's a clear definition of what the project's all about. But you, in my experience, you intentionally want to be fairly.
Vague?
Vague on this because you want to make sure that if you have a project that comes up through some new funding program, you want to have.
Broad enough you can capture that opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
For example, this list, some of the projects off this list, because they were on our list and have been there for a while, became part of the Connecting Washington funding and got a, a good jolt of funding. Some of those projects will start with design beginning in the 2017 to 2019 biennia. So being able to point to your list and say, we've thought about this, at times when there's an opportunity, you have to be able to adjust and go with what the criteria are being presented to you for the funds, whether they're state or federal.
Do you, these numbers, and again, I don't want to get into the numbers, just a question about the numbers, do they have escalators in there? So if it shows that it's going to be done in 19 or 20, the costs are based off of not today's cost, but whatever they're going to be, or?
Not, a little bit, but not really because there's, some of those projects are what you would call at 1% design. They've described, we're going to do something in this area, but you really can't tie down an estimate, especially in any kind of engineering estimate, and then do the, you know, pick this year and say, this could be constructed five years from now and, you know, and use 2004.
The numbers are somewhat.
Dollars. The numbers are a little fuzzy.
Irrelevant, yeah.
Because it's a big financially unconstrained list, so there's some, some there. We could go in and fine-tune the numbers, but they're really not as significant as being there.
And then the other question I had was, and maybe you spoke about this in Forward Washington, or what did you call it?
Connecting Washington is a 16-year state.
Was that the 15, is that the 15 package?
Yes, that's the states.
So like the Hardison Road and those things that were unidentified, so that funding's there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, what is going on? There was funding for the Hardison interchange, correct, in the past legislative?
Yes, there is.
So.
Someplace here.
Could you give a little information on that project?
On that project, it is.
Number 11 on your.
Yeah, it shows up as a number 2 under freeways.
Right.
In Connecting Washington, it received $47 million and that spread over three biennia, so 17 to 19, 2017 to 2019, there's funding for preliminary engineering and design. In 19 and 20, or 19 through 21, there's funding for acquiring any right-of-way that's needed for the project, whatever that can be. And then in the next biennia, which would be, I'm losing my numbers, 2019 to 2021, then there'll be funding for construction. Once you start construction, then it can kind of roll for however long it takes the construction project or process to happen. And it is possible, as you get into design, you find out that $47 million while when there was negotiated as part of the package, it may in fact, there may be something that's a little more expensive, and that's where I would be seeking additional funding from other sources to try and complement whatever's in there. So, so that's one of the ones that'll start in 2017. Our first project with any funding from Connecting Washington is the freight corridor project, the Phase 1 of it, which is improving the intersections on Pacific and Rucker, 41st and Rucker, and then Pacific and West Marineview Drive. And it's to, so that over-dimensional freight coming out of the port can fit around the corners easier than they currently do. And then there's a very large project, but it's the one the farthest out. I don't think it is slated to get design funds until 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. So David?
Yeah, so there's.
Looking for a resolution or what do you?
Yeah, there is a resolution in your packet, so we are looking for your action on this proposal that Public Works has brought to you.
What would the resolution number be?
0607.
07?
Yeah.
I move for the adoption of resolution number 160.
Any public comments?
Oh, yes, thank you, Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vice Chair. Any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, thank you for that correction.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So I move for the adoption of resolution 1607, a resolution recommending adoption of the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for 2017 to 2022.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Go forth, get as much money as you can. They're all need it. We need them yesterday.
I have a question, actually. So if it's a six-year plan, it says 2017 to 2022, shouldn't that be 23? I just want to make sure we get it right.
No, it is the six years, 2017.
18, 19, 20, 21, 22.
Should it be 23? Scrivener's error, as the head scrivener, I can fix that if that's necessary. I usually count on my fingers and make sure.
22, no, that's right, 22.
It starts at the beginning, I think.
Yeah, it starts 27.
So you count 17 and 18, 19, 20, 21.
Yes, it's right.
Oh, it's 22, it's right.
Okay.
I usually do, I usually do the finger counting in private.
Well, being an engineer, we're happy to hear that you were right.
You can't do the subtraction, 22 minus 17. Cause then you get a false number.
Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tisdale?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to the second item, which is other business. David, do you want to talk anything about your meeting on Thursday, or is there anything we need to know about?
Well, we're, we're doing, as part of the Metro Everett, we're doing a little design charrette that's in the daytime, that's kind of focused in around, oh, the light rail and Lowe's site, kind of that corner of areas. And so we're going to be doing some stuff during the day and then presenting some of the initial findings at 4:30 for some public consumption, but not really pushing it out as a public meeting per se, cause a little bit sensitive, because we're doing some things on properties and not everyone's invited to the property thing. So we kind of want to be able to go out and talk to the property owners before they read about it in the newspaper and stuff like that, so.
That's a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, so, but several hours of work and, you know, I think that the idea of, you know, light rail terminating in the metro area along with potential significant redevelopment of the Lowe's site and some of the other areas, I think is pretty exciting. So I think we're gonna, trying to use makers, their design skills to maximum potential while we have them still, and have some funding left in our EPA grant and see how far we can get. And we'll probably bring that back to the planning commission as a whole, some of those initial sketches soon afterwards, after we talk to the property owners.
Good. And your survey, is that continuing to grow and?
Yeah, the survey, yeah, if you go to everettwad.gov backslash metro, we do have a survey monkey that's on till June 10th, I think, is the way that we announce it. And last I checked, we're, you know, we get good pushes at times when we put things out through Facebook or News Blast, News Flash, and so we need to do that probably again. But we're getting good feedback. It's, it's pretty interesting, probably about 80 responses so far. You know, pretty softball questions in general that we had, but it was good to see general opinion, I think, from the public that they liked, they liked the trajectory of where downtown is going, a little bit like Commissioner Tisdale said earlier, that things are, definitely are improving. And they've had some specific comments, which are good, good, good detail that's showing up in that. The one that was a little bit less of a softball question was, I put a question about affordable housing and low-income housing within the area, and that's getting a little bit more of a mixed response. And in fact, that could be a good, a little bit segue of our conversation about affordable housing when we do the kind of a workshop at the next meeting, when we bring the Housing 101, because at one of your workshops or planning commission meetings, you rated affordable housing as a top priority, but we never really tried to define what you meant by affordable housing. So it's one of those things where we want to circle back and say, okay, affordable housing, are we talking about low-income housing or what are we talking about there? So, and I think you start seeing that a little bit in the survey questions, is there's some split, split opinions about that one, so, which is, which is good. It's good to have that conversation.
How soon after the 10th will the results be available?
We certainly can put them together right away. So, yeah, it's a survey monkey thing and they, we can kick out those results really easily, yeah. So, yeah, I think that'll be good. And then I think the, the idea is as we now kind of move into a next phase where we're drafting, staff is working on some action items and then kind of working on this design charrette thing, and we intend to probably not go back to the public until September for kind of a little bit more substantive end of things, so we can allow some of this to get fleshed out a little bit more, so the next round that the public will have a little bit more meat to chew on for the conversation and, but getting that information out, the initial stuff, and then I think the follow-up surveys will be a little bit more pointed on some of the areas of a little bit more conversation that we need to have, so.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Anybody want to move for? All right. Anybody want to move for adjournment, or?
Move to adjourn? Second?
Polls in favor?
Aye.
We're done. Thank you.